We just go back to YouTube.
Yep.
And we're good on my end, Terry.
All right.
All good.
So we had a little bit of a technical difficulty there. We lost power for the folks that are watching at home. So I will, I will go back to where my shared screen and where we were. Can you all still see my screen? Thumbs up, Carol? Awesome. So where we left off, I was talking about our FADS standards and I was talking about the hybrid concept, which is, and again, we, we experienced this hybrid concept when council was working with the Sunnydale Hall, where they had proceeded to work on the entrance portion of their building. So we, we were working with both the FADS and the modified FADS, but during that process, we, we ended up having a bit of a hybrid FADS, which, you know, we were going, we're identifying items between both standards. So this might be an option as well. Again, some, some other key financial notes. So like I said, back in 2019, RJ Burnside created a, provided council a report on what they estimated it would cost for all six halls, both for full FADS standards as well as modified FADS standards. On the left side here, you can see that Burnside's use contractors who are specializing in these fields. They also use historical cost data from similar projects and/or current construction cost data that are published by the RS Means Company. So this is how they came up with these prices. These prices that you see on the right side do not include inflation rates from 2020 or 2021. And I'll talk about that on the next slide. You will see on the bottom, just to clarify, Sunnydale Hall, like I said, they already received an estimate for the entrance, entrance portion only of, of their hall, and it represents approximately 450,000. And then the balance, you can see there, five twenty and two ten for FADS or modified FADS. For Brentwood Hall, again, I've highlighted them in bold, the amounts for full FADS is estimated at 530,000. So if we were to do all the items that Burnside's recommend doing at the full FAD, full FADS standards, that would be the amount. And/or if we were to do the modified FADS standards, it would be 220,000. Again, on the bottom left, I, I brought forward the reserves amount, so you can see the amount for each hall. The inflation effect, this is a little bit of sad news, is that we know that the cost of construction continues to go up. On the top row, you could see that, again, RJ Burnside's with the RS Means Company estimates are predicting a 5% increase per year. So if we were to take the, all the six halls together, and then you have all the $6.5 million for all six halls, or the 4.1 for the modified FADS, sorry. And if you add the 5% per year, you would, you would have to add 327,000 and 207,000 to that amount, creating a total amount for 2020 of 6.8 and 4.3 million dollars. Again, if you do that same exercise for this year in 2021, add another 5%, the amounts would be 7.2 and 4.5 million dollars. Again, in the comments, it's worth noting that these cost estimates should be used as a guide only, as costs may vary according to the time of year, the quality of material used, the volume of work, actual site conditions, and a new one being a pandemic. Back in 2019, the, our Burnside's did not predict a pandemic and how that would affect our rates. We also know that if we did a little bit of research on Statscan, and for the Building Construction Price Index, so the, the cost of labor, they also predict a 5% for every year, mirroring what Burnside's had predicted. We also know for non-residential construction price, Statscan are identifying a 2.8% increase for 2020 and a 3.3 for 2021. Again, through Statscan, I, materials, some raw materials such as your metals, being your aluminum, copper, steel, you're looking at approximately 13%, 13.6% increase in 2020, and perhaps even 27.8 for your metals. So that, so they've predicted that the, the cost of those materials will grow up that much in 2020. And finally, the, for the lumber and wood products, Statscan were predicting a 10.2 seasonal adjusted increase, and even up to a 44% for non-seasonal adjusted amounts. So significant increases due to inflation. What does this all mean? Is that the cost to renovate the halls have went up in both years since 2019. So if we take those amounts from 2019 and we add the inflated amounts from, due to inflation, you could see on the right side was the table that I previously showed you, which showed the amounts for 2019. And again, if you add those for 2021, you will see here that for Brentwood, full FADS would be approximately 584,000 and modified FADS would be 242,000. For all six halls combined, full FADS would be 7.2 million, modified FADS 4.5 million. Some other key community capital projects that all halls need to be aware of, as well as even the citizens and the public of Clearview Township, is that there are some significant projects, capital projects on the horizon for the community. We've captured a few of them here, and again, these are estimates only at this point. But as you will see, there's some significant investments to be made in the future by the township. Some of the items include the Collingwood Street Bridge, the Stainer Water Servicing, Creemore Sewer Plan, the Creemore Water Solutions, the Fire Department Public Works Building in New Lowell, as well as the Stainer Sewer. All these projects are estimated to be approximately $66 million. So on top of the renovations that are required to be put into the halls, there's also these renovations that need to be made at some point in time in the future. While we were going through the brainstorming session with council, we identified, again, we refer to these as thought bubbles, but these in essence are questions that must be answered at some point in time in the future by either the hall boards or council. I would like to take this time to go through them all, as you will see, they're all very important and quite pertinent to our projects today. So on the far left top side, a question that will be answered at some point in time is, do the hall board volunteers want to continue to commit for five to 10 years of managing and fundraising for their hall? Again, we, we will, we can't answer that today, but it will be answered at some important time. Second, if the volunteers do not want to commit, does council want to keep the buildings and/or direct another department to manage those buildings? Third, does existing autonomy of the boards still work for the hall boards? Fourth, should the existing role of the township change with operating community halls? Or even owning community halls? Fourth, is the existing usage of the halls meeting our residents' needs? Private, for example, private functions versus public programming? Sixth, how will council decide between the FADS or modified FADS? As I mentioned, FADS is a Clearview, made for Clearview standard. So how will they decide which ones to use? Will it be council's policy? Will it be hall boards' input or their preference? Or will it be the financial impact between the both standards? Seventh, how does the growth in Stainer and Creemore affect our events and programming in other smaller communities within Clearview? So as our bigger halls, such as the ones in the Stainer or Creemore Community Center, get busier, how will, what impact will that have on our smaller halls? Eighth, should council just provide a lump sum of money to the hall boards to handle their AODA requirements themselves? Is that an option? Ninth, does council want to repurpose the existing buildings? For example, should it meet township strategies? Or should they be exploring other opportunities? Tenth, do large investments in smaller hamlets provide value to that community? Is it a priority? And does it provide value and/or provide benefits to local residents? Meaning, can the investment that would be made into the small halls, is that a priority over other capital requirements in those communities, in those smaller hamlets? Next, will it impact the community if one settlement area loses a hall, but others are retained and also invested in? Next, grant availability, specifically after a post-COVID-19 pandemic. We know today that most of the grants that are coming out are mainly for outdoor projects or outdoor programs, again, due to the pandemic and less on indoor facilities. So what impact will the grant availability have on the bottom line? Fourth column, our contractor and contractors may not even be available in 2021, again, due to the, due to the pandemic. And how will that affect budgets and our timelines? We know that we're, we know on average, it will cost at least 5% per year, the longer we wait. We may not even have a choice. One of the, one of the areas that have, have, have had limited impact due to, to the pandemic is the construction field. They are as busy as ever. Next, what are other renovations that are required to the halls that are not AODA projects within the next five to 10 years? And who will pay for those items? Again, the numbers that you've seen above in previous slides are in reference to AODA items only. Next, bright, bright orange. All the kitchens, we know today that all the kitchens of all the halls do not meet the Fire Court Code standards. And this council wants to include those in the upgrades, and I'll talk about that again in some future slides of what we mean by that. Is there fundraising fatigue? Are folks just tired of fundraising and are folks just tired of donating? We, we know in our area that there's been a fundraising program for the Stainer Library. There's an ongoing program for the curling rinks. Regionally, there's a program going on for the hospital. So how successful will we be in fundraising? Last column, what impact will council's decision have on the future of the Small Halls Festival? Second last, the Station on the Green AODA and kitchen require, requirements as well. We know that they do not meet the FADS standards. Most of the Station on the Green does meet the Ontario Building Code standards, but not the FADS. And do we include them? Finally, are the halls currently in a positive financial situation? And has COVID impacted your finances? And, and by how much? So are you in a positive position? Again, these are questions that must be answered by council or by the hall boards in the very near future. The reason why we displayed these is we want to show how significant of an impact these decisions are on our community. Again, going through the brainstorming sessions with council, we asked them five key questions which would produce options for the hall boards. The first question we asked was, is status quo an option? Do we just leave the halls as is? Not invest any money, not, not do any renovations for AODA standards? So moving to the right, if yes, for which halls? And what would be the cost for those AODA renovations, one to 10 years in the future? And of course, the potential funds. So today, if we take all six halls and we use the FADS standards, we know we're at 7.2 million dollars. What would that number be, one to 10 years in the future? And if no, if status quo is not an option, then council and hall boards would proceed to the brainstorming and planning on slide 20 that I'll show you a little later, which is basically the options. Second question we asked council was, does Cloud, does Clearview Township require nine community centers? The seven small halls plus the two major ones in, at their, at the arenas in both Stainer and Creemore. Are they required as part of the Township's strategy plan moving forward? If no, does a township dispose of any of the existing buildings? And what is, what does that exit strategy look like? And again, I'll show that in slide 17. And again, if no, what happens to the existing reserve, the funds that were set aside? Also, what are the, what is the appraised value of a building and its land? And finally, do the buildings have a residual value to invest in other community projects? So that's if council decides that they do not require nine halls. If they do determine that they do require nine halls, then we would obviously proceed to the brainstorming and planning slide 20. Also, do we renovate or replace with a brand new building? Maybe it's cheaper, just to tear it down and build a new one versus the cost of, the cost of renovating. And finally, sustainability. How will the, how will the halls be kept up in the future after this significant investment? And finally, if yes, how are the halls' operations affected during the renovations? We know that it will take time to renovate the six halls. And how will this impact user groups in other Clearview facilities? And how will it be mitigated? Example, price matching or service matching? So for example, if a renovation, if the council would decide to renovate the Brentwood Hall, you, Brentwood Hall has its own prices, right, and it has its own service. If it's under renovations and you already have bookings that are, that are booked, will that price be matched at another hall? And will that service be matched at another hall? Good question to ask. And finally, do we have, and maybe perhaps we have individual MOUs with each hall during the construction to meet the users' expectations? Again, third question we asked council was, full FADS, modified FADS, or hybrids, or hybrid of both standards? So which ones does council want to do? Do we, and do they pay for only the AODA items that are, that are identified by Burnside for each hall? And does the AODA renovations include the kitchen? And, and perhaps any other items, example, wish list items? And are the kitchen fire code requirements included in these renovations? Included with the FADS or modified FADS? Fourth, how does Clearview Township pay for the renovations? And what's that funding model? Will there be financing, fundraising? Obviously, we know there's a reserve in place and grants. How much funds do the halls have to provide or fundraise towards these AODA renovations? We know that we have 1.5 in the bank, approximately 4.8 to 7.2 for all six halls. How do you, how do we pay for the difference? Also, should it be a flat amount or a percentage of the project cost that the hall boards should commit to? So for example, does council say Brentwood Hall, you're in for 50,000, 100,000? Or is it a percentage of the total cost? 5%, 25%, 50%? What is that number? And finally, what funding mechanism does a township use for a possible future fundraising shortfall? So a hall board may say that they can commit to a certain amount, but what happens if they don't? How does, how, how does Clearview Township fundraise that, that shortfall? And finally, the fifth question we asked council was, does council conduct public consultation? And how do you, how would they measure the community support? And if yes, what are, what are the questions to ask the public? And what does council want to ultimately know? Again, if yes, what method does a township utilize to gather information during a pandemic, during COVID-19? Do we just have hall chair meetings? Should there be public meetings at each hall, surveys? What tools would we use? And if no, if council does, chooses not to conduct public consultation, does council want to make decisions on behalf of the public and the hall boards? So of these five questions produced the options that we were providing to the Brentwood Hall as part two. So we are going somewhere with all this information. Again, a question that's come up from previous presentations with hall boards is, what are the AODA compliance if the municipality does not own the building? So there are five key items that we do know. Excuse me. First one, any major renovation must meet at a bare minimum the Ontario Building Code or what we refer to as the Modified FADS Standards. This is by any organization that serves the public in Ontario. Second, the completion timeframes may be different. However, we have passed the 2016, 27 completion dates that were set by the Province of Ontario for any type of organization. But the province may be lenient on public buildings versus privately owned or non-for-profit organizations who own public buildings. Third, the renovations may be cheaper for a private or non-for-profit corporation as they may go through their own procurement process and include items such as volunteer work, contractor donations, selecting their own neighbors to do the work, et cetera. The municipality does not have that option. Through its procurement policy, going through a tender, they do not have that flexibility. But a private or non-for-profit, non-for-profit corporation may have. Fourth, there's, there are some differences in the operating requirements for a private or non-for-profit operation with 50 or less employees, such as a community hall. Though, some of those differences may be towards employment standards, providing information and communication, accessibility policies, and training programs. So there is a difference in those operating standards. And finally, no accessibility advisory committee is required for a private organization. So as you can see, there are, there are differences from an operating perspective, but there are no differences from a building code perspective. If council chooses to renovate halls, what is the criteria to renovate? Again, more questions that we've had to ask council. First, in which order do the halls get renovated? Is it, is it one at a time? Or is it all at once? And, and maybe potential savings through one tender for all six halls? Is it engineered, design-ready halls? Do they get to go first? Or is it the least costly to the most costly, or vice versa? Or is it through the, the public process, the RFP or tender for all or individual halls? And do they, do they include in-kind donations? And finally, in-house renovation, are in-house renovations allowed? On the right side, who will manage the construction? What will be the role of the hall board throughout that process? And do we require an MOU for the construction phases? Who approves the final specifications of what gets done? Each hall, is each hall on their own for the construction? Does the township hire a project manager on contract to manage the renovations of all six halls? What are the insurance constraints during the construction? And finally, who is responsible for ensuring their work is completed and to what standard? So these are questions specific to if council chose to renovate the halls. As previously mentioned, regarding the standard for ventilation control and fire protection of a commercial cooking operation. We previously said that we know that all six halls presently do not meet the NFPA standards. On the left side, specifically speaking about subsection 2.1.2, it identifies the buildings that are classified as a major occup, major occupancy, meaning any structure used or intended for supporting or sheltering any use or occupancy in which, in which our community halls are defined as Group A Division 2 in those, in that subsection. And 2.6.1.12 states that a cooking operation that produces smoke or grease-laden vapors shall be provided with an exhaust system and fire protection system in accordance with the NFPA 96. Basically, the standard for ventilation control and fire protection for commercial cooking operations. So something as simple as cooking bacon in a commercial facility must have these NFPA 96 fire code regulations. We also did some research, and the total estimate amount to update the existing cooking operations in the six community halls is approximately $20,000 per hall, or 120,000 for all six combined. This, this number is not included in the amounts that you've seen in prior slides. This would be over and above. And on the right-hand side, I've showed some pictures of what that ventilation is, looks like in a commercial facility. We also spoke about an exit strategy. And that, and what does that option look like? So what happens if we would, if council would sell the hall and the land to the hall boards? Would the community halls be given or sold to the volunteer board? Will this ultimately solve the AOD issues? And would the renovations be cheaper? We know that it will, it would not solve the AODA issues with respect to the, the capital requirements that are required. But we do know that it might be cheaper to be done as a private organization. The boards would need to become incorporated to protect the volunteers. Who, who would pay for this with a township's support? What other support can the township provide to a private organization? Items such as taxes, grant or operational funding, water sewer expenses, solar revenues for some of the halls, snow removal, grass cutting, staff resources. Can, would the township continue to provide that support? And for how long? The new incorporated, a new incorporated hall board's responsibilities would obviously change as well. Items such as the financial operations, the managing the liability, operating and the capital costs, taxes, the SOCAN standards, the events and alcohol. the events and alcohol regulations and health and safety inspections. So at the presently, Clearview Township provides those services for the halls. But obviously, as a new incorporated hall board, that incorporation would be responsible for those items. And finally, what happens if the property is in turn sold again within a few years by the hall board? Would there be a first right of, right of refusal in X amount of years? So again, this is an option that if council chose to sell the halls back to the hall boards, what would that look like? Oh, sorry. So that concludes part one. I will stop sharing my screen very quickly. Give everybody a chance to, to make sure I have everybody's, everybody's still there. Um, so that's, that concludes part one, Kristen. Um, does anybody have any um questions or require any clarifications on the slides that we presented so far? Um, and then once that, once the questions are done, then we'll move on to part two. Does anybody have any questions? Man, I must did a bang-up job. Nobody has any questions.
You're getting better every week, Terry.
Wow, yeah, must be. Am I good to proceed, Kristen?
Yep, good with me. Yeah, that's good with me.
Good job, Terry. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. All right. So let's move on to part two. The good stuff. One second. Here we go. All right. So part two, choosing the AODA op- AODA options by the hall boards and providing your feedback. Before I present the um council's proposed options, we took out of the Burnside Report exactly what would be required to be done to the Brentwood Community Centre to address the FADS requirements. So again, these are FADS, full FADS requirements, not the modified FADS. At the top, I've shown the amounts from twenty nineteen as well as twenty twenty-one. And I'll just take some time just to, to explain what work is required um for the hall. On the bottom right side is a bit of a, is a table that we took out of the report that identifies every item and their corresponding amount, again, for the full FADS. On the north west addition, there would be a need to construct an addition at the north west of, of the hall to contain a male and female accessible multi-stall washroom. We'd also reconfigure the current male and female washrooms to serve as a universal washroom. This will require demolition of the existing storage shed currently court, currently located at the north west corner of the building. We, we would also extend the front entrance and sloped roof to meet with clear space vestibule requirements. Replace the front entrance landing, including sloped ramp to provide accessible path to the front entrance. Alternatively, the inner vestibule doors could be removed and the interior wall opened in order to eliminate the vestibule. Some interior renovations would consist of kitchen renovations to address the FADS deficiencies. Door replacement to meet new, to meet minimum required width and include power door operators. New signage to comply with the FADS section eleven. Providing assistive listening devices in the building. And finally, drinking, a drinking fountain and water and bottle filling station. Some exterior, exterior improvements, um we consist of providing a designated path to the rear exit, including ramp to the rear exit landing. Providing accessible parking stalls, including pavement markings and signage. And again, finally, for exterior improvements, provided an accessible picnic table located on an accessible path surrounded by firm level service surfacing. Alternatively, picnic tables could be removed. So this is what would need to be done to meet our FADS requirements. And again, on the bottom right, all those items are reflective um line by line for a total, total of five hundred and thirty thousand in twenty nineteen. So what we've done, based on all the information that you've seen, we've put on the top part here, all the different options that council could provide to the hall boards. So again, I'll go through all the different options that could be done. The first one, as we mentioned, status quo, no renovations, no changes. Second, provide lump sum of money to the board. Third, a township managed and repurposed, turn the building into a township managed and repurposed for its needs. Fourth, sell or transfer the building to a new incorporated board. Fifth, sell the building privately. Sixth, include all kitchen fire standard renovations. And this is more of an option to go on top of the other options, if you know what I mean. Seventh, renovate to full FAD standards. Next, renovate to the modified FAD standards. Finally, renovate to a hybrid concept. Standards in between the boat, in between both. Second last, just demolish and build a brand-new building. And finally, a permanent closure. So these, and then fi- and perhaps there are other options that we haven't thought about that perhaps the Brentwood um hall board may think of and may want to provide to council as well. But these are all the options that we thought of, um again, based on the information that we received. So again, through the brainstorming process, council chose three options for the Brentwood Hall to consider. Again, there's no preference in any specific order. It's just from all the options that you see, these are the three that council want to provide to the hall to start the basis of communication to making final decisions. The first option is to implement full FADS to the existing building. Council would be responsible for seventy-five percent um of the, of those costs or contribute seventy-five percent towards the full cost. And they would be seeking from the Brentwood Hall twenty-five percent. Um, and of course, those financing details could be determined at a later date. So if we were to use twenty twenty-one estimates for full FADS, including the twenty thousand dollars for the kitchen fire codes, a total, it would be a total amount of six hundred and four thousand dollars. That's all in. Again, seventy-five percent of that amount would be four hundred and fifty-three thousand, which council, which council would pay for. And the twenty-five percent would represent approximately a hundred and fifty-one thousand from the Brentwood Hall board. Again, as previously mentioned, this would include all the kitchen renovations to meet the NFPA fire code. The second option that council wants to put on the table is to implement modified FADS to the existing building. Again, the same tw- seventy-five to twenty-five percent ratio. If we were to use twenty twenty-one estimates with the modified FADS, it would be a, including the kitchen, it would include a two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Again, one ninety-six uh five hundred uh representing seventy-five percent and sixty-six thousand five hundred representing um the twenty-five percent. And again, this would include the fire codes as well. And the third option that council wants to put on the table is to perhaps sell the building to a new incorporated board. They would be willing to sell the land in the building for one dollar. There would be continued support from Clearview Township for snow removal, basic services, um help with insurance costs, perhaps the taxes through the Community Assistance Grant Program. Uh, and provide some proportionate funds um from the reserve and obviously also assist with legal expenses. Council is anticipating a twelve to twenty-four month implementation timeframe um to create a new incorporated board um and to obviously get the ability, the business established. You could also upgrade the kitchen to fire codes from the existing reserve that's in place. Um, and if the, and if sold within a certain timeframe, um town, the Clearview Township would be requesting a ten-year first right of refusal. Meaning that if the Brentwood Hall Board, the new incorporated board wanted to resell the building, the township would have first right for, within the first ten years. And finally, the reason why this is on the table is that it might be cheaper for a new incorporated board to complete those renovations versus the municipality. Obviously, as mentioned, there's a different procurement process than a township tender. So, um, so those are, this, this, that's the end of our presentation. Again, these are the options that council would like the Brentwood Hall to consider. Um, I'll stop sharing my screen. Um, the, um, so some of the halls have, um, uh, obviously, there's a lot of, a lot of information that is received and some of the halls have chosen to, um, you know, talk about it some more and get back to us. Um, and other halls have already provided some feedback um to the options that were put on the table. So Kristen, I'll be looking at, um, at you to let us know how you want to proceed. Uh, and again, I'm available for any questions. Um, myself and mayor measures and council members are available for any questions or clarification that you would, you would require.
Can I ask? Thanks, Terry. Oh, sorry. Sorry, Kayla, hold on a second.
Will we also get a copy of the slide, of the presentation?
Absolutely. Yeah. Kayla will be emailing it to you um tomorrow.
Okay, uh, Kristen, can you? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so I have a question. Are all the halls um going to have to do the same thing that the township determines? Or is it going to be individualized for each hall? So if one hall picks modification or full FADS, or is that all going to be across the board? Everyone's doing the same thing or nothing at all?
Yep, good question. It's, it would be individually for each hall. So my, our plan is to bring back um a report to council for each hall individually. So we've incorporated.
That makes a lot of sense, yeah.
Yeah, we've, we've incorporated the information as a whole because obviously council has to make a decision for all six halls together. But no, every hall will, um, every report will be for each individual hall.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
Actually, could I comment on that also?
Yeah, of course.
Hi, thank you very much. Terry's right. Uh, you know, when council met, uh, we obviously discussed the entire project and in Terry's presentation gave you a, a pretty wholesome understanding of, of all of our responsibilities with all of the hall boards and all of the hall facilities. So council needs to look at the decision on how it impacts the entire township. But we have asked Terry and his staff to come up with individual reports based on the recommendations that you and your hall board members come forward with because each hall will be a little bit different. They may choose different options. They may have other suggestions. And, and uh, we wanted to leave the opportunity for us to make a decision as a council uh by hearing your input in your hall, you know, as a focus. So Terry's going to prepare a report that'll be for each hall. The bigger question though for council will be, is how do we fund the entire project? So we haven't got that sorted yet. Uh, we haven't even figured out how we're going to put that on paper, whether that would be just creating six different files and, and running it all independently. Uh, because it, one of Terry's slides indicated that there would be perhaps, if we do a lot of renovations all at once, that we might hire a single contractor and, and, and you know, that becomes quite efficient if we're renovating Ottawa and Sunnydale and Brentwood and Avinge all at the same time, that the contractors can all work at different parts of the job as they're waiting for this to get done and get this done over here. So there's efficiencies to do it that way. So we have to be, we're, we're unsure as to exactly how that's going to play out. But to answer, to support Terry's question, we will ask for individual reports and council then has to figure it out from there. Okay?
Yeah, no, that's appreciated. Um, I mean, it's a lot of information to take in. I um wouldn't be able to speak for the whole board, so maybe we'll plan a meeting and just go through it.
Did she just freeze or did everybody freeze? Um, most hall boards are going back to have an individual hall meetings and discussing and then we're going to forward information onto Terry after we have a private meeting with just the hall boards.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. So we can time to read it, ju- digest it.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and also have a really good discussion of, you know, um, I know it's a big page to look at, but if Terry, uh, when he presented all those thought bubbles, those are a lot of questions that need to be answered. Some of those answers are going to come from you folks as hall board members. Some of those questions are going to be answered by council as we, you know, look to how to make those decisions. So there's a lot of uh material that needs to be addressed and, and there's a lot of questions that still need to be answered. We have to get started though, because you can see time is running out and uh money is a little bit short and funding opportunities, uh, you never know where they're going to be. Um, if I can speak for a minute about funding, I just want you to know, uh, we did make every effort to speak to uh Minister Raymond Cho, who's responsible for AODA and in Ontario. Um, uh, obviously, my predecessor, Mayor Vander Cruz and myself, we've all both had meetings with him and uh we've tried to get this very issue across the table and it's been very unsuccessful uh to, to get any real response back from Minister Cho as well as from the province of Ontario. And further, today was the provincial budget and uh earlier this month, actually, maybe it was January, I met with uh some members of uh, of the provincial legislature uh who are doing the budget, pre-budget work. And I made a presentation to them asking for support for AODA uh in the provincial budget. I have skimmed over the budget notes uh this afternoon and I did not see a single mention of AODA uh issues in the budget. So I don't think there's any funding models coming from the province of Ontario to support our uh, our, our efforts here. So, there you go. We're open for more questions. Please go ahead.
Okay, so any more questions from the board?
Um, I think I'd like time to just kind of, for us to mull it over, talk about it for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, fair enough.
I think we'll let, we'll have to set up a hall board meeting, get together and then be, in the meantime, listen to the community, try to get some of their input to bring back to our hall board meeting to discuss. And then we can forward information on to Terry after that.
Um, Mayor Mayor, was there ever a discussion about amalgamating the halls together? Um, I believe there's the importance of the halls. Um, with hearing the presentation, it's like, yeah, do we have enough um viability of uh revenue to support all of them? Um, but you know, we still want our little halls. Um, so was it ever brought up about amalgamating from, you know, that, let's say, Brentwood and Sunnydale corners amalgamate, um obvious, this is just quick, you know, Sunnydale building may be less to renovate, but then we'd have the assets from Brentwood of selling it that, you know what, Sunnydale would be top-notch and then it would still be available for us to use um as a community.
Right. The, the interesting thing there, Laurie, is that uh, please don't forget that every hall is available to you and all citizens of Clearview. Uh, you know, they're not just in the little corners of our township, but there are available. So if you want to rent the Sunnydale hall, call them up, rent the hall. I mean, it's available. Uh, and uh, we have not had a, a really full discussion about amalgamating them, but the question was put in one of these points here, whether uh the future of the halls would, you know, would the hall board model of management be continued? Uh, would the halls be managed by a different department in the township? Would the halls, um, you know, Would the halls, um, you know, in the future, be operated separately uh, from a volunteer board model? And, and so it's, uh, those questions still have to be answered. Um, you know, I think the great part about having these meetings and, uh, Councilor Lammers has been to a few of them and, and Terry and I have been to every one of them and, and the staff that are here as well. The great thing about this meeting and these meetings is that we're getting a really good understanding and, and some good feedback from volunteers in each of our corners, about how they feel about, first of all, the importance of their halls. And you know, during COVID, it's, it's even more interesting how there's a lot of great interest in this for sure, even though they're not open. Uh, so I, I, I think that you're going to find that there's a lot of volunteers across the whole township that want to see these halls remain operational. Therein lies the bigger problem for council to come up with the answers about where we're going to get, I guess basically five, five and a half million dollars to, to spend on hall board renovations across the whole township. So, yeah, you know, respectfully, this hall, uh, we're speaking about tonight is a smaller hall. And so as a result, with one floor, your renovation cost, while it seems really daunting at some over five, you know, half a million dollars, it's actually not, uh, too bad when you consider what a Duntrune or a Avingen Hall will be facing at the one point eight to something, Terry, is that something in that neighborhood was the number, one point eight million dollars? So there's some, yeah, there's more discussion yet to be had. So you know what? That's a really good question. I appreciate it, Loriann.
And one of the other things we would have to, I think, think of if we're getting into renovations is we all work full time. So how do you manage all of that? Um, so you know, when they had good questions, it's something that one person from the township would oversee it. Like that would be a part of our discussion, I think, as our own group is, you know, I don't know of any of us that would have the time to be able to put in for doing this. I wouldn't even know, like, I can change a light bulb and, you know, a few things like that, but so, um, that would be a challenge for us, I think.
Yeah, if I can, Terry, you had a slide in there about whether we would actually entertain, um, hiring someone to be a project manager or contract a project manager to oversee this. I mean, we haven't got to those decisions yet because council hasn't decided. But you know, given the option, if we were to address the six or six and a half renovations that are pretty significant and pretty complicated, I think that would tax a lot of your time, Terry, as a senior manager, would it not? I mean, it would be, not that you couldn't do it, I'm just saying, that's a lot of work. What do you think, Terry?
Oh, absolutely. Your worship for, for, for six halls together? Absolutely. That would, that would be a full-time job in its own. Um, you know, if it's, so again, it depends on how many halls we'll have to renovate at the end of the day, but yeah, oh yeah, that would be a big job.
Yeah, so that speaks to what you're saying, Carol. You know, for sure, it's a, yeah, I, 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 you know, that's up to you guys. You, you'll have to tell us how you feel you want to do it. And every hall's a little bit different, right? Everybody has their, their own uniqueness. And that's honestly what makes all of our halls very special. So excellent.
Uh, any other questions? Is there any other questions from the board?
Come on, Melanie, you've seen this a few times. You gotta have something to say.
I got nothing.
What? You're kidding? Come on.
Um, okay, so, um, I guess if there's no more questions, we'll definitely thank you guys for bringing this presentation. Um, I know our board will be, um, excited, I guess, to take a look at everything. If we can have an email to us, um, you know, we'll try our best to get together as soon as possible and get it written down and get it sent to you, Terry, um, hopefully, uh, as fast as we can. Um, and anything else from anyone?
Yeah, and if I can just add, Kristen, I mean, I might, you know, my, me and my team are always available as well. So if you also want to have an additional meeting, because you require more clarification or, you know, you want to talk about, you know, anything, we're always available.
That's great. Thank you, Terry. Okay, and I guess.
First then, can I ask a question of your board? Just, just as an interest sake. Uh, because the facility is also the Simcoe County bus stop. I don't get down there that often. Can you guys give me a little bit of an update? Is it busy? Does it get used? Is, is the bus regular? Is there, are there people from the area that, you know, park their car there and jump on the bus? I'm just wondering what, what, what's your input on that?
Loriann, we'll let you answer.
Yeah, okay. Um, it stops all the time.
Sure.
Um, I'm not, I don't see cars parked there, um, that I have noticed. Um, and I'm probably by there at least four times a week, five times. Um, I have seen people there. Um, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I actually see more people at the B and M in Angus. Um, that's where I noticed clusters. So, um, I do see people on the bus when it goes past my house. Um, but is it like in Berry? No?
Okay, no, because I'll tell you what I'm interested in, Loriann, is, I mean, uh, when I'm at work at the township office and anybody who goes into Stainer, it's, it's a very regular bus. Obviously, the county does a great job. But what I'm interested in is, is whether you notice people using it. I can tell you in Stainer, it's impressive. People get off that, that Simcoe bus regularly in Stainer. And they're also sitting waiting to get on the bus in Stainer. So I, I'm, I'm impressed that it is working as well as it is. So I just was wondering if the stop in Brentwood is continuing to be supported. And the other side of that too is the fact that, you know, if the future renovation here, uh, it might be something that we could talk about, um, with Terry, which was brought up about whether we would add some type of public washroom type facility if there was demand for that type of service, because it's a bus stop. Whether that would be something that we could make available and, uh, and have it, you know, supported uh, either through the township or through the county, because it's a bus stop. So I just wondered if that, if there's enough demand, uh, that we could justify that.
Well, I think most people get dropped off or possibly walk. I don't know. I know when it was free, I seen a lot of seniors taking it, uh, when the trial, when the trial was like, this is exciting. Um, so the buzz was there. Um, but to say what the ridership is at this point, um, yeah, I've seen a few people, but not, nothing like I see in Angus. Right there on, yeah.
Yeah, no, I understand. Okay. No, thanks. I just thought since I had many of your board members here, I could ask that question. So thanks very much, guys.
Driving, driving by in the daytime, there's at least one or two that we see standing there getting on or off. There's, there is use there. We, we see driving the roads all the time. We see them standing there.
Yeah. Well, you know, the, the interest in this is simply because, uh, tourism shows that, uh, and transit services also show that people need, uh, washrooms, right? And they're also in great need of access to water. And so water, uh, water outside, water bottle filling stations or, you know, a faucet or whatever, a tap for drinking water and some of the things that, that, that enhance a community and, and a spot where there's a bus station. So I'm not trying to establish the station. My point is, is that if we enter into a big renovation here and we try to do something at, at Brentwood, the possibility of adding that type of service, which would be additional to what the hall is, it would be at that location. And so it would make sense to use the water and the sewer services that are available there. So it's just a topic that did come up in a discussion. And so since I have the board here, I thought it asks. So, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. And when everyone here is anywhere, is everyone available for April seventh? Uh, for the meeting to discuss this? It's a Wednesday.
Yeah, I'm available.
I'm available.
Yeah, I'm good. Okay, so, uh, let's do April seventh. And, um, meeting will be adjourned then at eight twenty-four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you.